I call this November 10th meeting of Alamo County School Board to order. Ms. Carlson, do you have a motion from our closed session?
I do, Chair Page. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing closed meeting were heard discussed are considered in the closed meeting.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Dr. Acuff, that we certify by voice vote that everything that was discussed in the closed session was in that motion. Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll observe a moment of silence. Could I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carry.
We need a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move we approve our consent agenda.
A second?
Moved by Ms. Lee, second by Ms. Osborne, that we approve the consent agenda. Any question, any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carry.
I'd like to introduce our board members and to have a mic check. Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. Jono Alcarro.
Jono Alcarro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Mulla District, and our student rep, Brisa Caballero Chico.
Brisa Caballero, student rep.
Thank you all. I don't think we have any announcements, do we? Dr. Haas?
I did just want to acknowledge, we invite principals to come to the board meetings and they sign up for that. We do have Cassandra Blunt, a principal of Jackson P. Burley Middle School here tonight, so I want to thank Ms. Blunt for coming out to the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Blunt.
I don't have an announcement.
For showing up, thank you so much.
Can you turn the volume up? We can't hear.
Okay. Is it possible to turn up the lights, Ms. Johnston? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, our spotlight on education, Brisa?
Thank you, Mr. Page. We know from an extensive industry-wide research and from our own hallways and classrooms that the quality of a learning environment greatly influences the ability of a student to learn at their highest potential. In fact, our strategic plan, Learning For All, emphasizes the importance of engagement, health, and wellness in community in setting out the goals and objectives of our school division. The good news is that there is no lack of enthusiasm in support for new ideas that bring our school communities together. And one of the most successful programs this year already is having an impact at Jackson P. Burley Middle School. Enhanced learning environments is not a new concept at Burley, which is one of the first schools in our division to create and champion an anti-bullying program more than two decades ago. Further back, Burley's place in history was made secure by the relationships that inspired students, faculty, and staff to life-changing accomplishments. Now chronicled by its inclusion on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places, today the school is leading once again, modeling a new program. This is how we do it: building the best Burley community. The idea was born out of the desire of Principal Cassandra Blunt to establish school-wide behavioral expectations using such approaches as reinforcing positive behavior throughout through support systems. Key was providing opportunities for continuous community building. The blueprint... That's a mispronunciation. The blueprint for Burley's school-wide Expectations Initiative was created during the Southern Regional Education Board's Summer Conference on Social and Emotional Learning that included the school's principal, Cassandra Blunt, its social and emotional counselor, Mark McCoy, and its student safety coach, Evan Orr. The program includes posters and signage. Throughout the school, a theme song that students hum in the hallways, reports from students on their morning newscats, and an impressive sense of ownership that's evident among students and staff. The program concentrates support for such goals as improving attendance, language views in interpersonal communications, and six core values that govern peer relationships. These values include love, trust, fairness, support, accountability, and safety. This is how we do it seeks to confirm the improvements in the school's learning climate by increasing positive results in the Panorama Survey by at least 5%, using techniques such as the Burley Young Leaders, random acts of kindness, grade-level challenges, and my favorite, the Wheel of Fortune are all essential contributors to these improvements. Here with us this evening is Evan Orr, Burley Student Safety Coach, and Mark McCoy, its social and emotional counselor. Again, Mark will tell us a bit more about the program's success and some early results from this fall's Panorama Survey.
All right, good evening. I'm Ivan Orr, student safety coach at Burley Middle School, and this is my counterpart, co-lead of the program.
Mr. McCoy, social and emotional counselor at Burley.
And we just wanted to provide you all this evening with a brief overview of what we do. Again, the program is called This is How We Do It. Our theme song is the song from the 1995 hit, Montel Jordan, This is How We Do It. It plays on WBMS every morning, and so the students are very familiar with the music. So we wanted to start real quickly with the goals. And so one of the first goals that we identify with the program is that all students will have a clear understanding of the expectations for successful participation in the Jackson P. Burley learning community.
Yeah. And also, all teachers will have a clear understanding of their roles in supporting students to meet the expectations.
Now, one of the things that we have done is we have divided this program into two separate program strands that myself, I'm over top of one, and Mr. McCoy's over top of the other. I'm over top of attendance, and so one of the things that we talk about when we talk about attendance for our students is that your being here means everything to us. We really try to model that and we really try to make that meaningful for our students. And so some of the bullet points under the strand of attendance is that we want students to be there, you know, present physically and mentally. We work on our transitions with our students from class to class and around the building, and we also work on what is in our locus of control, which is tardies once they're in the building.
And my part is relationship matters. The give me five, that's Ms. Cassandra Blunt's baby, she had that for some time, so give it, kudos to heaven. So, the give me five is respect, attention, time, enthusiasm, and best effort in that order, which leads off with respect. Something that I focus on is peer-to-peer interaction, student-staff interaction, and effective communication with our students to our staff.
And just to give you a little more of a deep dive into attendance, and I shared this with our staff, first we started with leadership in the summer before pre-service, and then during pre-service, but one of the things I shared with them from my own personal background was that with my daughter, who's now junior at George Mason University, when she was born, one of the things that, the thing that I said to her is, "I'm so glad that you're here." And that's something that I always try to share with our students, when we come into the building, "I'm glad, I'm glad that they're here," and it's genuine. And so when we talk about how attendance matters, the bullet points that we use on that is that when you're here, you know, we can work together to reach our shared goals. When you're here, we can check in to see how you're doing both physically and mentally. When you're here, the opportunities for success are increased exponentially. When you're here, you strive daily to be present in mind, body, and spirit. When you're here, and this is one of my favorites, you strive to walk, talk, and greet each other in the Burley way, so that's how we do it at Burley. And as we make our way to class, we embrace the adage that on time is late, but we often extend grace, and one of the things that our principal is so clear on is that we encourage our students to beat the bell. And when they beat the bell, they can tune into the teacher and then they can get to the work. And then, when you're here, every moment is precious. Being tardy might miss the most precious moment or moments of all, but the underlying theme, the through line is, we're so glad that you're here.
And my part, as again, relationship matters. Again, give me five, respect, attention, time, enthusiasm, best effort, and I concentrate on peer-to-peer interaction. As we know, pre, post, these kids are different, so we got to handle these kids differently. So that's part of my job is, you know, how to handle these kids, you know, pre and post them, of these kids. And then also, something that I take pride in and hold these kids accountable, all the six core values. While we was out at a training in Dallas, Texas, I was reading, and you know, you see these six core values, love, trust, fairness, support, accountability, and safety. Love, it's not an affection, that's a choice. It's not, it's not an affection, it's a choice. So that's something I tell my kids is, "I love you and that's a choice," and they take that and run with it. But I guess I just hold these kids accountable and just, I want the best for them.
And lastly, we wanted to, you know, one of the, again, an overarching thing of what we're trying to do here is that we positively frame our expectations. And so we wanted to just share with you some of our school-wide expectations and how we positively frame those, and so the touch points that we're working on are on our hallways and stairwells, you know, how we move around and what the expectations are there. Our gymnasium, you know, it can be loud, it can be rambunctious, but we want to positively frame our interactions there. Our classrooms and our learning spaces, as well as our restrooms, we had some challenges last year and some TikTok challenges last year, but we're moving away from those. And so we try to reframe these things into a positive light. We have some others that you want to share.
Yeah. Cyberbullying activity, as you know, these kids, they like to tune into their technology. You say classrooms and learning, buses and bus loop, you know, the expectations of what it looks like to be in the bus loop. You get outside, you get to the bus, you get on your bus. You say cafeteria, hallway, stairwells, gymnasium, I think you get them all.
And so, and so then, you know, kind of where we are now, where we're moving, is that, you know, we have these expectations and then we can get to the opportunities. And the opportunities for our community building, you know, we look towards a Saturday Academy, where it would be some interest-based exploration for our sixth and seventh graders. We're looking towards a Burley Young Leaders program for our eighth graders, as well as focusing on attendance, whether it's perfect attendance or attendance growth quarterly, random acts of kindness through citizenship, and our JP BMS Helping Hands that will be our very helpful folks. You want to share some of those?
Yeah, and just to add, last year from the Panorama, we were at the kind of the bottom, and after doing the Panorama from this year, we up there at the top. So I see improvement.
So, you know, that's sort of a nutshell of where we are with This is How We Do It. I don't know if there are any questions that we may not be able to fill for, but we're here, so. By the way.
Are there questions from the board? Dr. Acuff?
How do you deal with your, how have you dealt with your incoming middle schoolers? I mean, they're sort of new to the environment, do you have any special outreach to them?
Yeah. Like Mr. Orr said, in the morning, the morning news, when they're talking about This is How We Do It, you know, just setting the expectations first thing in the morning, getting it in their brain early.
And I would also add to that, we have spent a lot of time with our sixth graders as far as being close to them in the building, as you know, if you walk this, you know, if you walk Burley, you know, that our sixth grade wing is an added wing. So during those transitions, one of our team is always down there to kind of help our students find their way. And then we spend a lot of time conferencing, trying to get our sixth graders to understand the Burley way, because it is new for them. And we understand that, and we've provided some grace, but I think when it's November 10th going into 11th, some, you know, some, they kind of understand, you know, our expectations somewhat, so.
You know, a couple of thoughts that seem to go into both of your purviews is, I loved what you said about, "We're glad you're here," because that's huge, especially for somebody who's debating whether or not they should even be coming. It's nice to go to a place where you're glad I'm here. And in both, oh, sorry. And in both situations, I see you. And if you're seeing them every day, or, you know, glad you're here, and that gets into something that has been a mantra of the school division at least as long as I've been on the board, and that is, "All means all."
Yep.
So I applaud what you're doing in both of your areas of responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I didn't have a question so much as a comment, to just say that I really appreciate the message that you shared and agreed with it. Attendance in particular is something that I think is so important to the success of a child, and I think often children get kind of lost, lost in the crowd, and people aren't paying attention to whether or not they're attending or tardy, and what that means. So I just wanted to say thank you. I also really appreciate that you ended it with a tie to kind of accountability, like you, the Panorama scores last year were concerning, and you're working really hard to change them, and I'm really glad that you're making positive change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have one question. All of the students at Burley, nobody was, was probably just a twinkle in somebody's eye, even not that, when that song, This is How We Do It, was popular. So how did, how did you come up with that as a title as compared to something that maybe they would be more familiar with? And Dr., Ms. Blunt have something to do with it?
Yeah, I think it has something to do with being the freshman in college.
So it was her baby and her mantra, so we took it and ran with it for, so.
Okay, it's very, very appropriate, so I'm glad that, you know, that middle school student is able to sort of adopt to that music. So thank you so very, very much for your report to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We will now move to our public comment. Ms. Carlson?
Do we have school board superintendent business?
Oh, okay. Was there any school board superintendent business?
Other than, just noticed Josh Walton, from Principal at Walton Middle School came in, just want to recognize him for coming out tonight. Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Walton?
I had one little piece of business I want to get credit for my 6:00 AM wake-up with Ms. Acuff to ride a few bus routes this morning. It was actually on the suggestion of Mr. Caden Wright, who's in the audience right now. It was very informative, it was, we did experience one double back in a bus full of late students, although they were a joy to ride the bus with, they were late. And then we also got to do a high school run, it was neat to see the difference between them, but most, the neatest thing of all, of the whole experience was to see how the bus drivers were interacting with each other constantly on the radio to try to figure out how to get as many students as possible to school in a timely manner, and really relying on each other, which is a double-edged sword in that I asked the bus driver who we were with, and she said, "It feels like a family, and it's nice to feel supported by your workers, but it's also a really tough task that they're having to take on, and over time, I think that does wear them down." So it was, it was great, I know almost probably everyone's done a bus ride, so I wanted to say I didn't mind, and if you haven't done one yet, it's worthwhile.
Last week, Jono and I took the mental health first aid training that is offered through the division, and I found it to be very helpful and useful, very informational. It's four and a half hours in person.
Yes.
It's four and a half hours in person and two hours virtually, so I thought it was very helpful. Miles Nelson taught it with Kate Shapiro from Region 10, and so if it comes up, I would take that.
Thank you.
I have something too.
Okay.
Chair Page. I met this week with James Pierce and Kate Lambert, who is the new ED for the Boys and Girls Club, that is on schedule to open, I hope, in mid-February, but what we talked about is ways that we can collaborate on a lot of different issues, and one of which was perhaps having our counselors and staff train in mental health first aid as well. So I've made those connections with Miles Nelson, and he has already contacted the Region 10 folks. So we're all looking how we can collaborate to best support our students.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for calling that to my attention, Ms. Carlson, because we would have missed all of those informative points from all of our board members.
Yeah, and I'll say, I'll say one other notice, because Caden and I are going to be there tomorrow, there's a Veterans Day event, that's what this is set up for, it's tomorrow at 11:00 in this building, if anyone's interested.
Okay.
And I'm doing public comments, so I'll start with that. Let me pull up the regulations, I'm reading them from the agenda, so they should have been available to everyone who signed up, if you go to the meeting agenda items. "We invite and actively seek the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provide for time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign up with the clerk. Sign up is available beginning on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting," says today. Public comment guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. You should state your name and address, or voting district. You should address comments to the school board as a whole. You should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. If you have written statements or other supporting material, please hand those to the clerk. And if you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, which is three minutes, you can provide a copy to the clerk who will distribute it to the school board members. You can also email us individually or as a whole. Three minutes are allowed for each presenter to speak. You are required to stop after three minutes. There are not more than ten speakers today, there are nine, so we will stick with the three minutes. There is a system up here, when the light turns yellow, that means you have one minute left, when the light turns red, that means your three minutes has elapsed and your time is done. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support or non-support be used. If you wish to show support for a speaker, you can stand and raise your hands, or raise your hands." So, that is all. I have, like I said, nine speakers, one of them is on Zoom, she will be our last speaker. I will just go ahead and read them all out so that people are aware of when they're going to be coming up. So I have Nancy Moore, Jordan Barr, Caden Wright, Meg Bryce, Randy Zacherson, Kristy Corman's, Mary McIntyre, sorry, Mary, Emily Yen, and Leslie Good. So Nancy Moore, Moore, if you're here.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight, and thank you for your service to the community. My name is Nancy Moore, I'm from the Whitehall District, and I do appreciate that the board has allowed us the opportunity to speak to the policies about the parent's right to review sexually explicit instructional material. And that relates to your two policies that are called the learning resources and textbook selection, and also the school instructional materials policies. First, in the proposed policy, Roman numeral 2AA-R, page 2, it reads, "The superintendent/ designated shall appoint an evaluation committee to review and to evaluate textbooks in one or more of the subject areas for which adoptions are effective beginning July 1 of the designated year." However, but under, it's the State Code of Virginia, 8BAC 720-170, quote, "The appointment of evaluation committees by the local school board is to review and evaluate textbooks in each of the subject areas." And by my interpretation of the code, of the state code, we should be reviewing books in all the subject areas, not just one or more. So I have a question about that. Secondly, under policy 2A-F2, learning resources, textbook review criteria form, I have a question with regard to why are there other sexually explicit terms and conditions that are outlined in the Virginia Code 18.2-390 that are not listed under sexually explicit criteria? Without listing those, I'll move on to just say, thank you. I did want to have one, I had one other thing, that sexually explicit material entry does not have a rating scale on the draft policy that I saw for Alamo County. The other criteria do have a rating scale, and I wondered why. I'm hoping that means it's a yes or no, and if there is sexually explicit material there in the criteria, you would just say, okay, it doesn't work to have it as an instructional material. I, as a parent and a grandparent, I asked the school board to give sufficient time for public comment in an effort to implement a policy on January 1, 2023, that's good for all of us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. The next speaker will be Jordan Barr.
Good afternoon, good evening. So I'm Jordan Barr, I live in the Rio District, Idlewood Drive in Charlottesville. I'm a parent of several students here in the county. Kind of piggybacking on what Ms. Moore had to say, you know, just focusing on parental rights, really, just hitting that aspect of it. Virginia State Bill 656 supports parental rights and development of these model policies concerning instructional materials and sexually explicit content. I just really want to focus on the parental authority is a constitutional right that has been recognized multiple times by the US Supreme Court and upheld in Virginia law through Virginia Code and Virginia Supreme Court. And school officials must compile a list of all materials that could fall into this questionable purview of sexually explicit materials. Teachers and other educators must review their classroom materials or other instructional materials being used during the school day and compile a list that is accessible to parents for review. So like, I don't want to get into the specifics of it, but I just want to make sure that parents have that opportunity to look at those materials, and even if it's copyrighted, you know, to be able to go to the school and not have any restrictions, to be able to walk into the school and go look at those materials and decide for themselves what's appropriate or not. And then also recognizing parents' rights to receive alternative materials or assignments for their child in a way that does not result in them being singled out or being ostracized. And again, parents should not be treated as an afterthought, nor as a group who must be appeased, rather, you know, feel like the parents are the primary customers and the primary stakeholders in Alamo County public schools. And then also quoting from, you know, the Bill 656, non-punitive implementation, "The department remains committed to working with school divisions to ensure a positive, safe, and nurturing learning environment for all students. And to this end, local school division policies shall implement the requirements of the Act in a manner that is not punitive in any way for children whose parents request alternative instructional material." instructional material." So just kind of piggybacking on the last point. And then also, the Bill 656 serves respect for parent decision-making, and each parent has the right to make decisions concerning their child's education in accordance with their customs, faith, and values. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Barr. The next speaker will be Mr. Wright.
Good evening. I'm Kayden Wright. I'm a student at Alamoah High School, and I'd like the board to reconsider the proposed career learning communities plan. The division's idea is simple. Students will be able to choose from a range of 16 different subjects and specialize their education in a field of their choice. On paper, this idea is great, but when you put it into action, there are major issues with this proposal. Firstly, for most career learning communities, students will have to be transported outside of their base schools. Transportation needs make this program conflict with one of the division's strategic goals, equitable and transformative resources. It is not equitable to create more routes for our already exhausted transportation system when many students still arrive late to class. It is almost offensive to plan to build more centers and more academies while many schools are still unsupported and underfunded. In addition, the idea of career learning communities itself directly contradicts with another one of the division's strategic goals, affirming and empowering communities. The easiest way to destroy a school's community is to remove its students, and career learning communities does exactly that. Now, this might not necessarily be a bad thing, but it certainly doesn't align with the division's strategic goals. Finally, career learning communities will not create thriving students. The high school redesign team didn't properly communicate with students, teachers, or administrators to make sure that this program will be successful. A survey isn't enough to warrant this big of a change. To put it simply, an uninformed plan, which this is, will create chaotic results. One of two things has to be true. Either the division has no intention of fulfilling the strategic goals that itself for itself, or the people that are in front of me are so blissfully unaware of the issues in this program that it seems like they never cared about it in the first place. So I would ask you a question. How can you expect your teachers, your students, or your staff to be successful in this program when you're setting this up for failure? I and many others would suggest that you reevaluate your career learning communities before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Wright.
Someone's in.
The next speaker will be Meg Bryce.
Hi. I'm Meg Bryce. I'm from the Samuel Miller District. Thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to speak about the budget survey that was recently distributed. I guess I guess I'm a little bit shorter than you are. I want to speak about the budget survey that was recently distributed. And I think that you all did not create the survey. I think that it was created by ACPS staff. So I recognize that you all didn't create it. But still, if it's going to be used to direct funding for next year, I think this should be known. I found the survey very frustrating. So this is supposed to determine the priorities that the 2023-24 budget should support. Each question on the survey begins with a stated objective that is part of the strategic plan. So I'm going to give one example. So in this case, ACPS will foster culturally responsive environments that affirm the identities and life experiences of all stakeholders. First of all, at a very high level, I found the survey problematic because there's nowhere for me to say that I don't agree with an objective. If I find an objective so vague that it is meaningless, there's no way for me to indicate that. Throughout the survey, the questions are worded in such a way that the respondents are basically forced to affirm and applaud the strategic plan. The only choice is to what degree. But more specifically regarding some of the proposals meant to support the objective, the respondent is given three recommendations. And there are, it's like, three bullet points for each question. So two that stood out to me in this example. First, add adaptive play equipment to playgrounds. Make play spaces accessible for students with special physical needs. I loved this. Like, I would absolutely support that, support funding that. The next one is curate diverse literacy resources that can be distributed to families to build libraries at home. I'm decidedly less enthusiastic about that. I think we're a public school system. We're not a public home library system. So that would be really listed on my low, on my list of priorities of things to fund. But I have to respond to them as a whole. I'm not allowed to say, like, I really like number two, but I don't really like number three. So I just found the survey incredibly problematic. And so in the future, I'd like to see more engagement with parents about the survey, or I'm sorry, about next year's budget, with more of a focus on prioritizing exactly what, like, how money is spent. I mean, that's the point of a budget, right? We have, we have limited funds, and so we need to prioritize what we really want to spend it on. And hopefully, there will be more of a focus on academic excellence, because I thought the survey was shockingly thin on any mention of that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Bryce. The next speaker that we have signed up is Randy Zacherson.
Good evening. My name is Randy Zacherson. I'm in the Samuel Miller District. I've got two grandsons in Western and Henley. And I'm here to comment on the board's response to the new Virginia Board of Education model policy relative to parental rights. I've always been a big parental rights person, as you may remember, recall. But I find that proposed instruction materials, your policy IIA, to be kind of obscure and obtuse. It deserves to be discussed and debated with the parents of this community. I didn't like it in the last two years when you had two other controversial policies that you never debated or discussed. You just rubber stamped consent agenda. You just, you didn't care about parental input. This is another case of it. And you've already made your views about this parental, this model policy known in no uncertain terms. You've actually published it in a very, I don't think, proper form. But in any case, you must comply with it by law. You were so adamant that you had to comply with the other ones by law. So you got to apply by this parental rights by law. And I want you to embrace this policy with the same enthusiasm that you did on your favored policies, CRT and transgender. Because in those policies, you went through every other policy and figured out what needed to change to reflect those policies. I expect you to do the same with this policy. This board, if you look at the, if you look at your, this draft, which we got no comment on, it lists nine cross-reference policies, okay? I expect you to go through these nine policies with the same vigor as you did with the other policies. Let me take one, for example. I didn't go through all of them. But there's, the first one you mentioned in this is your policy INB, Teaching About Controversial Issues. Yeah, I think that kind of pertains to this policy. However, if you read that policy, last reviewed like in 2019, you really clearly specify the parental, the students' rights and the teachers' rights. It's still only a one-page policy, but you talk about students' rights, teachers' rights. Nowhere in this do you mention parents' rights. Matter of fact, the word "parent" does not even appear in this policy. And the policy is called Teaching About Controversial Issues. Anyway, thank you. When you pass this one, whatever it turns out to be, because nobody knows.
Mr. Zacherson.
I expect you to do the same here. Thank you.
Okay. Your comment period's over. If you wanted to give those to the clerk, you're welcome to do so. I didn't know if you wanted to pass that along, what the-
Well, it's your policy.
Okay. I didn't know if you had comments on it, that's all.
No, no.
I didn't know if you were trying to give it to us or not.
Well, no. Just look up your policy, I, INB, and look at the nine cross-referenced.
Mr. Zacherson. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kristy Corman.
Good evening. My name's Kristy Corman. I live in the Samuel Miller District, and I have two children in elementary school. I also want to say that I just couldn't be happier with our experience at Murray Elementary, specifically led by Seda Deloria. The first thing I'd like to comment about is the recent budget survey. We didn't receive any details on the budget itself, and my search has been fruitless. So it was difficult to answer budget-related questions without the scope of what percent of the budget is tied to each objective and effort for context. The questions were phrased, so the only way to respond was in the author's desired way, which only checks a box of community engagement. I did not feel like I was being authentically engaged. Our budget should focus on retaining our high-quality teachers and staff, academic excellence, and school safety. This survey emphasizes extracurricular activities, being a mental health clinic, fossil fuels, and school records, among other things. We owe our students and community a consistent, safe, high-quality education, and until we're doing that, there isn't room in the budget for anything else. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for responding to our concerns at previous meetings and putting the parental rights regarding instructional materials on the agenda. I've compared the draft policy that Mr. Zacherson referenced to the model policy provided by the governor, and I feel more information is needed before this should be approved. The most important point is who decides what sexually explicit material is. The draft policy reads that the school board decides. Do you all read everything? Do you have a pulse on the threshold of 14,000 sets of parents? Parental involvement is a must when it comes to this topic specifically. So I would like to see a revised draft that includes more detail, oversight, and further definition. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Corman. The next speaker is Ms. McIntyre. Ms. McIntyre, I'm such a visual person that when I see the M-C, C, that, there's not the A, I can't pronounce it right, even though I clearly know you.
Sorry. Mary McIntyre, Rio District. Two weeks ago, I emailed you thanking you for raising bus driver pay, raising concerns about the compensation study, our stipend pay not being adjusted, and the state of intervention in this division. I received one reply from Jono thanking me and saying he would read it the next day, but that's it. Having heard nothing regarding the actual concerns that I raised, I forwarded it to you all again yesterday morning. I understand that sometimes emails get buried. But again, nothing until this afternoon, a quick reply from Katrina. So I signed up for public comment, because if this is going to continue to be a one-way conversation, I might as well have it with myself in public. Now, out of curiosity, I searched my emails. Over the last six years, I've emailed the board maybe eight times total. I am not the annoying person blowing up your inbox over every little thing. I've attended nearly every school board meeting in the past six years. I've spoken in public comment sporadically, only when compelled by something important, and probably fewer than 10 times total in six years. Most of you have had a conversation with me at least once, and I've proven my personal commitment to making this division better. But I'm not asking for special treatment for myself. I'm asking for what everyone should get. I'm a parent of two ACPS students. Parents should get a reply when they write to you with concerns. I'm an employee and a leader of the AEA, an organization that more than 70% of your employees elected to represent them. Your overall employee satisfaction and morale are very low. All employees should get a reply if they write to you with concerns. I'm a constituent and a stakeholder. Besides policy changes, what have you accomplished? You haven't solved overcrowding, closed a single gap, fixed transportation or our sub shortage. You denied employees their labor rights by rejected collective bargaining. Next year, voters will want to know what it is that you have done, anything that deserves reelection. And I'm not sure that you can say you are responsive to your constituents. A generic response that ignores specific concerns is not being responsive. Now, as an educator, I realize you might need some scaffolding to make this easier for you. We aren't going to change that goal and lower the expectations. We're going to change how it is you reach those expectations. So there are seven of you, and there are seven days of the week. Perhaps everyone takes a day, and that is their day to personally respond to emails that arrive that day. Quality responses only. I can provide you with some sentence starters if you don't know how to respond, something like, "Ms. McIntyre, thanks for reaching out..." I actually don't know why, insert my concern. I will ask blank in the central office about this and get back to you by blank. I think my point has been made. This is obviously not just about one email that did not get addressed. The position of public trust that you wanted and that you hold is eroding, and all of you need to step up your level of performance. Your report card would say you are not meeting expectations.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. McIntyre. The next speaker, our last in-person speaker, is going to be Ms. Yen, Emily Yen.
Hello. My name is Dr. Emily Yen. I am a staff researcher and ARPA coordinator at the Virginia Education Association. I would like to provide some clarity about permissible uses of ARPA funding, since there seemed to be some confusion during the October 27th meeting. Per item 137, paragraph 45, chapter 2 of the 2022 Special Session 1 Acts of the Virginia Assembly, $130,122,981 of ARPA funding from the SLRF portion was given to provide $1,000 one-time bonuses for SOQ-funded positions. While the school board has discretion on how they distribute that $1,000, if they give it to just SOQ-funded positions, or if they give it to other staff, this money can only be used for one-time staff bonuses. So it can't be used for other purposes. So I would highly encourage you to give full $1,000 bonuses to all full-time ACPS staff as proposed during the last meeting. It is permissible, I know that there is about a million, a little bit over $1 million or $1.5 million, that needed to make up that gap since, since there wasn't funding for non-SOQ-funded positions. It is permissible to use SOR 2 and SOR 3 ARPA funds that were given to the LEA. And as of the end of October, there was $4,402,202,000, so almost $4.5 million. So you could use the SOR 2 and SOR 3 funds for that top-up. So please take this into consideration as you vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Dr. Yen. The last speaker is going to be a Zoom participant. So hopefully, this goes smoothly. It's going to be Leslie Good. Ms. Johnston, is she logged on? Hi, Ms. Good. We can see you. And not hear you.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay. Okay. So I want to start by saying that I have two children within the Alamoah County School District. They are thriving both socially and academically. However, when my nine-year-old comes home asking why there are more than two genders, and what does sexual identity mean, that makes me highly concerned. These children are entirely too young to even understand what the Alamoah County School Board is trying to protect them from. In my opinion, this is nothing more than adult politics being forced. Are you hearing me? I'm sorry. I'm getting feedback that you're not-
Yep, we can definitely hear you.
Okay, thank you. In my opinion, this is nothing more than adult politics being forced upon our children with no parental consent. I do have a question for the board. In our latest email that parents received, we got word that we were to celebrate Solidarity Week, which is for the LGBTQ community, to feel more safe within our environment at school. I am very unsure as to when any of these students who sexually identify differently have ever felt unsafe in comparison to children who identify as male or female. have ever felt unsafe in comparison to children who identify as male or female. And I guess I missed the memo as to when that was ever an issue. My final question is, if this is how we are perceiving different groups of people, when does the coalition of straight white children get their week of honor and protection? To me, my children are taught to love everyone regardless of race or any other factor. I do not feel that it is appropriate to be instilling in prepubescent children issues of sexual identity when there aren't any issues to be had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Good. So that concludes our public comment. Thank you to everyone who took the time to sign up and speak. I know it takes courage sometimes, so thank you all. Now we're moving on.
Thank you. We will now move to our State of the Division, and this portion of the agenda will be led by Dr. McGlaughlin.
Good evening, board members. I'm Pat McGlaughlin, Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Planning, and I'm pleased to be with you tonight to present our annual State of the Division report. So the State of the Division report is a look back at the work we completed in the 2021-2022 school year around our strategic plan, Learning for All. The plan is guided by our vision, that our learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society, and our mission, that working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds, and we will know every student. It's also guided by our values of equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness, and by our three strategic goals: thriving students, empowering communities, and equitable and transformative resources. So those three goals have a total of nine objectives, 47 strategies to meet the goals, and 64 metrics to measure our progress. So when you've got over 100 strategies and metrics, the Strategic Planning Team really needed to consider a way to share our progress updates with the board, our school staff, and our community members in a way that was accessible and made sense to everyone. So to that end, we've had a team working over the past several months to create an interactive web presence for our annual report, and I'm happy to share a few highlights of that with you tonight. So the State of the Division report is all web-based now, and it starts on our State of the Division page, where you can, you're greeted by a letter from Dr. Haas, a rather lengthy letter by Dr. Haas, I think, this year. He had a lot to, we had a lot of accomplishments there, and he had a lot to highlight in there. You've got links to all of our strategic plans from the past years over here, and I'll take you over to our strategic plan for 2022. This gives a brief update of what the plan is and why it's important to us, but then it also, on the left-hand side, outlines each one of the nine objectives that we have for our three goals. By clicking on any of those objectives, and I'll take you to Objective 1, Point 1, you can see our strategies. This objective had six strategies that were there, and each of these strategies can be opened up so you can get a brief update on the work that was done in support of that strategy over the past year. For example, one of our strategies for our first objective, that will ensure that each student is supported to achieve their best, we wanted to implement comprehensive school improvement support teams with representatives from all relevant departments. And in the 2122 school year, we developed a structure for school improvement plan teams to guide them toward common goals, strategies, and metrics in our improvement plans. We continued to refine the school improvement plan structure to align with improvement templates provided by the Virginia Department of Education, and we implemented school improvement triad teams of principals that attended quarterly meetings, summer school improvement meetings, and SIP check-ins every couple of months. So whenever you like, you can go through that and open up any of these to look at the work that we did over the past couple of years, over the past year. On the right-hand side, you see all of the metrics associated with that objective, things like on-time graduation rate, increase in reading skills, or SOL performance. And if you click on the View Objective Metrics down here, it will take you to a page where you can access all of those metrics. One of the things that I think is a great process improvement for our State of the Division report this year is that it's now interactive. And so, looking at one of our metrics, SOL pass rates, which we've discussed with the board a couple of times, you can come to this site and you can break this out. This is a metric that looks at our division pass rates versus our, versus the state pass rates. You can change subjects, so you can see English reading, English writing, history and social studies, mathematics, or science, and then you can break out by different reporting groups. So you can click on a group and see how our Hispanic-Latino kids did compared to the state, how our economically disadvantaged kids did compared to the state. It also has multiple representations of that data. This looks at all of the groups at once, and you can break it out by different years and different subjects. This looks at our comparison to the state. One of the other interactive features that I think you'll find useful in here is our Equity Table. For the past several years, we've had a Division Equity Table that looks at a few of our key metrics, such as chronic absenteeism, SOL pass rates, and kids who are earning advanced studies diplomas. And in the past, we've been able to look at this at the division level. This year, we've updated that, so you can go through and you can select any school in the division to see where they stand in terms of their Equity Table. As just a reminder to the board and to those listening in the audience at home, the first column here shows the percentage of each of our membership groups in terms of our total demographics. So we have 8% Asian students, 21% African-American students, 29% Hispanic-Latino students, and then you can go across, and wherever the numbers are different, there's a disparity in proportionality with that. And so this allows folks to see all of, any of our schools and where they stand, as well as the Division report for that. So we've built out a site that is, we think, very user-friendly and very interactive. But still, we've got dozens and dozens of metrics that are in there. And so for the State of the Division report, while all of those 64 metrics are important, we wanted to focus in on 14 of what we call key metrics that we are going to use as kind of a baseline year from 2122 and report onto the board each year to see if we're making progress toward our goals. And tonight, I'll spend some time highlighting what those key metrics are that we'll watch over the next five years. So our first set of metrics is for our Thriving Students goal, and there are six metrics there. The first is our on-time graduation rate, and our goal is to be equal to or higher than the state average for all of our reporting groups, and for our rates to continue to increase year over year. This chart shows our 2122 graduation rates compared to the state average, and that we are meeting our goal of beating the state in all of those categories. The second key metric is SOL achievement. We want to close achievement gaps and also have pass rates for each of our reporting groups be equal to or higher than the state. As we've reported to the board recently, this is an area identified for improvement in the division, as we are meeting our goal in 12 of 45 possible categories. Green on this chart indicates that we're better than the state, yellow is equal, and red, lower than the state averages. A third key metric for this objective is the reduction in course failures each year. Our baseline data from 2122 shows that 7.55% of our middle school students and 12.03 of our high school students had at least one failing grade for the, for a year-end grade last year. This chart also shows the proportionality of who has failing grades compared to our division demographics. Each year, we hope to lower the percentage, the total percentage of failures and bring more proportionality to this table. And I know I'm moving through this rather quickly, all of these tables are accessible in the State of the Division site to dig into a little bit more. The next metric that we want to share with you is one we've shared with you also in the past, our Elementary Reading Dashboard. This shows by quarter the percentage of students at each grade level who are meeting, nearing, or below our reading benchmarks. We will look for the percentage of students meeting benchmarks to increase each year. Just as a quick refresher to the board, this is when we gave a presentation about this, this is one of those metrics where the bar gets higher each quarter for students to hit that. It's not one set bar for first grade and second grade and third grade, it changes each quarter, which is why you see some fluctuation in that. Key metric number five is our Panorama Student Survey Results. We hope to see the percent favorable increase each year and to move closer to the top of national averages. Our students take this survey twice per year, and this chart shows the favorable responses and national percentiles for each category in the survey. A green field indicates a move toward, a move to a higher national percentile from the fall to the spring, and a yellow field indicates an area that stayed at the same And our final metric in this objective is our fidelity to both our homework and grading policies. There are a number of questions asked to students in the survey each year that help us tell how we're doing in these policies. This gives just a couple of examples. One of them is asked if you were assigned homework over winter break, which we ask folks not to do. The grading question asks about questions like, "Do I understand how my grades are calculated? Do I understand which assignments will be carried in my final grade? Do teachers include things like effort or participation or homework in our final grade?" All of those are connected to our, to our grading and our homework policies, and we look for affirmative answers to increase year over year. Goal two is our Empowering Communities goal, and that has four key metrics. The first of these is the percentage of licensed staff who have earned a culturally responsive teaching credential. At the end of the 2122 school year, that number was at 22%, and our staff and our goal, there was 22% of our staff, and our goal is 100% completion by the 2526 school The second metric is to have demographics of our teaching staff be proportional to our student body. This chart shows our current state in the 2122 school year, with the lighter blue color being our student population and the darker blue color being our teaching staff. Each year, we'll look for proportionality to increase so those bars start to line up. Last year, we also began giving the DEVRO Student Strengths Assessment, or DESA, as an indicator of student strengths and areas of need as they relate to social and emotional learning. The DESA rates each student as having SEL as a strength, being at typical levels, or being in area for improvement. Last year, in the pilot year, we administered DESA to students in grades 2, 7, and 9, and that will expand this year to include grades 1 through 4 and grades 7 through 10, and next year to grades 1 through 11. We hope each year to reduce the number of students who have a need for instruction in this area and increase the number of students who show this as a strength. And our final metric for this goal is the Panorama Family Survey. As with the student survey, these results show our percent favorable and our national percentile rank. Last year, we had 2,144 responses from our families, and each year, we hope to increase participation and raise our positive responses and percentiles. And our third goal is Equitable Resources, which also has four key metrics. The first is our Teacher Retention Rate, which was at 82.9% for the 2122 school year. Our goal is to increase our teacher retention rate each year. The second metric are the results from our Gallup Employee Engagement Survey. Each year, we hope to see a decrease in respondents who are actively disengaged and an increase in our percentage of engaged employees. And the third metric is the percentage of our capital requests that are funded each year through the CIP. These are reported in five-year increments. Our baseline data is the funded CIP for fiscal years 23 through 27. We had a request of about $275 million. We had an adopted CIP of about $153 million, which is about a 55% funded CIP for that five-year period. And the final key metric of this goal focuses on building, on our building capacities. We have mitigation plans in place for all of our schools that are over capacity and hope to decrease the number of schools that are over capacity each year. So as we conclude, I feel that it's important for the State of the Division report to include some highlights from our year that might not be reflected just in looking at metrics. We accomplished a great deal in the 2122 school year, and I'd like to share some of those highlights with you. First of all, we fully reopened our schools following the shutdown that began in March of 2020. We established the ACPS Human Resources Department that is dedicated to Albemarle County public schools. We supported the establishment of the Albemarle Foundation for Education, a philanthropic organization dedicated to supporting our schools. We opened a new addition at Croze Elementary School. And our Department of Technology installed a total of 1,075 display boards, so that every learning space in ACPS now has state-of-the-art display technology. We held a dozen community engagement forums with students, staff, and community members, and began a community budget input forum as well, which has continued into this year. The Department of Instruction launched a Division Professional Learning Community model that allowed teachers to work with their colleagues throughout the division, developing curriculum frameworks. And for the first time, we implemented division-wide common mid-year assessments across all of our schools. And perhaps one of the best ways, however, to understand how we put our strategic plan into action is to see what's happening in our schools and departments. And to help with that, I'd like to share a video that highlights some of our outstanding experiences that we brought to our school communities in the last year.
Students like Eli and Ari are sprucing up their math skills after pandemic learning lawsuits in students across Albemarle County, and they say it's getting competitive.
24 is a card game that has four numbers on each card, and your target goal is to always make 24.
Children of Meriwether Lewis are gearing up for a tournament.
5 minus 3 equals 2, 2 plus 2 equals 4, 4 times 6 equals 20.
You can use any four of the operations, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. So 24 is a game that helps develop computational fluency, and what we know in our schooling and in early numeracy is that it's the foundation to higher-order thinking.
I studied for like a week at home playing my mom and dad, and I kept beating them.
Since the kids can beat adults, now it's time to compete against one another.
And it's a pretty competitive game, and also makes, like, helps you learn math fast and like do it on your head really fast, which I got really good at now that I played 24.
While the fun is an added bonus, in past years, this game has improved SOL scores. With students back in person, it's a tool they're using again.
What I notice is that as we build confidence, it helps shift that math mindset, and what goes along with that confidence is competence.
A group of eighth-grade students at Henley Middle School in Croze placed second in Nationals in the recent We the People competition. Annual We the People competitions are sponsored by the Center for Civic Education. This year, schools who made Nationals attended virtually. Faculty at Henley Middle School are proud of their students and explain how this feat might shape them as citizens.
For us, I think the overall goal is just to create students who are more invested in our community, in civics, in developing an understanding of how the government is impacting them and what they can do.
Local students have collected over 11,000 pounds of food for the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. The 2022 School Food Drive was the most successful in its 11-year history. The food collected will provide 8,849 meals to the hungry. The fundraising effort was led by Albemarle High School students Kat Ravachandran and Emily Warren.
It's a day where we culminate celebrating Black History Month by honoring Martin Luther King Jr. And each year, a student from each grade level is nominated by their teachers, and their peers have a part in this as well, and they nominate someone who exemplifies all that Martin Luther King Jr. himself stood for and shared with us and that we admire about him today. We celebrate our diversity at Woodbrook, and so to welcome families in today, to be here, and to hear the words from the classroom teachers describing how their children exemplify these qualities is really special.
When I heard about that, I was proud, and I knew I was doing the right thing for being a leader to the community.
I love to help my friends, them help me, and I help them. If I'd be nice, I'd be kind, I don't be mean, I will help some people.
We all usually... We all usually have a box of tissue with us because it's very moving and meaningful to this school and to our community.
An Albemarle County school with many students using free and reduced lunch options has a unique new way to help feed children. A new community garden championed by the Building Goodness Foundation and Piedmont Master Gardeners is officially open. Students at Greer Elementary are fostering their green thumbs and taking the food home after the harvest. Here at Greer, a lot of the students live in apartment buildings and they don't have a lot of access to nature and to growing things. Many of the warm weather veggies will be ready to take home by the end of this school year.
Abbott is a class where it prepares you for high school and college, so you know what to expect and how to expect it.
Part of the Abbott curriculum for eighth grade, they had to think of a community service project. And so this is the first year that we actually took a community service project idea and put it into effect. So they were thinking about different types of events that they could do. Some of them weren't possible at this time, like a bake sale or so forth, but they had thought about a walk-a-thon. We had to decide on a charity and that's where we went from there. The students did all the work. They contacted VIA. They contacted the teachers and staff to let them know about the walk. They made flyers. They made a sponsor sheet.
We learned a lot of organization skills and we learned how to work with others a lot because it, you know, it took a lot of us to be able to put this together.
Every year for the last 19 years, we've been part of the American Heart Association Jump Open Hoops for Heart. Now it's called Kids' Heart Challenge. And we've raised over $201,000 in the last 19 years. The kids really enjoy it, every grade, kindergarten through fifth grade. We do our Jump Open Basketball Units during the fundraising campaign and we talk a lot about the heart as February is Heart Month as well.
We've been raising money for children who have heart diseases and helping them out a little bit.
This year, we've raised $7,084 in the last five weeks. We talked about the American Heart Association and what it is and what, what we raised money for. And we talked about how it saves lives and the science behind how they know so much more about the heart now and surgeries and education and research than they did before.
I just like to raise money to help people and it's good to donate to something really important. And I would say the Kids' Heart Challenge is really important.
My philosophy is to make classes fun as possible.
Emily Anderson.
If students aren't coming to class excited, then I'm doing it wrong.
This is a sixth grade science teacher at Lakeside Middle School. She's wrapping up the school year on a high note. She was named Educator of the Year by nonprofit Charlottesville Business Innovation Council. This award honors a local kindergarten through 12th grade teacher who incorporates innovation, entrepreneurship, and technological achievement in the classroom. Anderson has found success by implementing video games during class time.
Minecraft especially has been so valuable.
Minecraft, Anderson says, teaches students how to survive in a three-dimensional world. She says the game has promoted teamwork and student achievement, especially throughout COVID.
Even when I was teaching virtually, I could open up a Minecraft room and kids could join from their home and we could all be in the same virtual space together, working on things together and with a team.
Zachary, one of our students.
Right now, we're working on an element escape room.
And his peer Armand are creating virtual scientific experiments that would be rather dangerous to perform in the classroom.
Like we can build like a volcano or an explosion in Minecraft and it wouldn't actually physically destroy anything.
He says Anderson's class.
One of my most favorite classes. She's an amazing teacher and she lets us, like she actually lets us do this sort of stuff.
It's really important to the, the school and the faculty and staff that our grounds are kept nice and clean during the school year. You know, it's a time in the school year where we want to be outdoors and what we've been through for the last two years has encouraged for more outdoor activities. So, you know, having our grounds in a position that they look, that they do and they are nice and up kept is important to our staff. And our employees are the ones that should be appreciated for that. They spend many, many hours. You know, they come out of the winter months of working snow removal duty and different, working on equipment. And then, you know, we get into mowing season.
Typically, typically a pretty busy day. I mean, you gotta kinda, you gotta kinda like being outside. I mean, cause we're outside when it's hot, we're outside when it's cold. I mean, it's a, but man, the guys I got, I got a really good crew of guys that come in and work hard for us and take pride in what they're doing. And couldn't, couldn't ask for a better, better group of guys.
I'd like to thank all of our employees for rising to the challenges of the past two years and continuing to do all the things we do for our schools on a daily basis.
When you ask someone about the school or who you picture a school, usually you think of probably the playground, possibly the principal's office, but very seldom you think about the school nurse's office. During the pandemic, we have really started to realize how important our school nurses are. On an ordinary day or during an ordinary year, they would probably be dispensing medicine to students or taking care of some of the ill kids. But during COVID, they really had to become experts at things that they weren't experts at before.
I'm Crystal Jackson and I'm the school nurse for Jack Jewett Middle School. And I've always done OB-GYN or pediatrics. So this is just kind of right in the realm of it. You are not just a nurse, you're a teacher and you are that, that role model for them or that mother figure for them. And so some kids don't take things as well as others. So you just have to kind of calm them down and let them know that, you know, you're here to help them and that it's going to be okay.
May 6 is National School Lunch Hero Day and our school cafeteria workers are definitely the unsung heroes in the school. I believe they are working hard every day and have every single day since March of 2020 when the schools, everyone shut down, but we kept working. We were in the schools preparing meals. Our love is for the children to see their faces and to know that we are providing something that's essential to the school day.
A lot of hard work, but fulfilling because we know that if some, some of the kids, this is their only meal during the day. So I feel that even though it's been challenging this year, it's worth it at the end because the kids are happy and they're fed.
We are just very, very grateful for the staff that we have and how they're so dedicated to come in every day, work hard, and do it for the students.
Albemarle County Public Schools buying its first Type A buses to help with the driver shortage. The Director of Transportation says they bought two of the vehicles and they'll be used starting this fall. The bus can seat up to 14 students. Each Type A bus costs about $75,000. The big ones are about $125. Charmaine White from the Department of Transportation says, here's the big thing. Drivers are not required to have a commercial driver's license to drive the vehicle. You don't need a CDL. She says they hope this helps with the driver shortage as they're still about 15 people short. Well, the Community Climate Collaborative with the Virginia Discovery Museum teamed up with the Albemarle County School Science Teachers, putting together climate action kits for students in the area. CBS Antunes Franklin Spain joins us in the studio live with more on this unique collaboration. Franklin.
Rick, they put together these climate action activities kits for fourth graders enrolled in Albemarle County Public Schools that will benefit over 800 students. These kits will include solar powered night lamps that will charge by the sun. They are, they will be able to grow their own garden with the seeds that are included. With these kits, students will get a better understanding of home energy. Director of Communications of C3 Terry Kent says these kids will be able to put an energy scavenger hunt together and use these tools to help them learn more about natural resources.
They're going to take these kits home. They're going to interact with them and talk about energy and all that sinking in and it's really making that connection so that they can lead and, and do better.
Sometimes trees are both kind of because if you cut them, all of them, they won't grow back far, like go back really fast.
You can turn off your lights when you're not using them because then like your bill will go down. You don't have to pay much.
You can ride your bike to school instead of taking a bus.
There'll be that family partnership where they can teach their families what they're learning and help their family get involved as well to have an impact on the community.
So Mr. Page, I forgot to tell you, you had a little bit of a starring role in our video this year, but you did a, a great job there. So, so we show that again, just to, to emphasize this. Just to emphasize what this looks like in our school when we talk about thriving students and we talk about engaging and empowering our communities and we talk about equitable and transformative resources. And so as we wrap up tonight's presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't give credit where credit is due. This was really a team effort to build out this website, to build out the videos, to collect all of this, the metrics data. And I really want to make sure we, we thank the following people. Lauren Hunt, Jamie Gelner, India Hahn, Dallas Hitt, Chris Gilman, Sarah Duzenberry, Mark Leach, Sam Deleso, Phil Giromita, Helen Dunn, Patrick Huddleston. And that's folks from our communication team, from our strategic planning team, from our Department of Technology, who really worked hard to get this together for everyone. And so that's the end of the presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
I very much like the interactive State of the Division. With respect to the dashboard and the, the school-specific data, I mean, I guess the issue is how are we giving the feedback to the schools and how is this a living document, a working document?
So, so there's a number of ways. One is that we've got, so, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday, we'll present the State of the Division to our leadership team. So they see all of the different elements that are in there. That's all of our directors. That's all of our principals. Superintendent's cabinet are in there as well. And what you see in here is pulled, we have, I think, a really wonderful position in our Department of Technology with Sarah Duzenberry, who uses a program called Power BI to build out any kind of dashboard that, that we ask for, as long as she can get access to the data. And so when you see things like the, the SOL chart that is, that's up there or the, the failing grade chart that's up there, those actually come from that Power BI program. And principals have access to even more robust reports through Power BI. And we do workshops with them during their school improvement meetings, during principals' meetings to remind them that all of this is out there. The strategic planning team works quite closely with them to, to not only show them what exists, but also to get feedback from them about what would be helpful. How would they want to see their data presented so they can make it really actionable in terms of student achievement and improvements?
So I have a one piece of feedback. I appreciate that our State of the Division is, is constantly evolving and I think evolving generally in a positive direction. I think if we go back a few years, it was like a, you know, a five-page PDF document. But with this one, I almost feel like some of the information is really deeply embedded and hard to pull out. So I have like a minimum critique would be if we could get it in like a one, like so you can Ctrl+F and find something. So in particular, the Equity Dashboard, which for years has been a really quick tool to look at, both for the community and even as a school board member and see like, here are the metrics, is actually pretty hard to find in the current setup. So while I appreciate the level of granularity as you dive into it, it's hard to pull out some of those key pieces of information.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was, that was a challenge we were trying to find solutions to as well, when, when we have so many strategies and metrics to report on. I will check in with our technique team about like a searchability feature on there. If we can add it, we certainly will.
Or even an executive summary on each topic.
That's right. Yep.
Three sentences, examples. Yeah, cause then to be, I hesitate to say this because I know how much, I would rather have all the information here, but to find the, the even the SOL, you had to go to, you had to know the objective, objective 1.1, then you had to go and look and if you scroll to the bottom, you have to see the metrics button, click on the metrics button. And then there's like a 20 menu thing there to find the, so.
Yeah. So we could build, we could build a metrics, just a metrics page on there where you have them all in front of you and you could, and you could link out to them.
That would be great. And I know for here, we have the information for us, but in terms of like having the community be able to really quickly see, I was really proud of how we had the Equity Dashboard and like those key metrics, you know, the on-time graduation, the AP credits, the third grade SOL scores for reading. I'd like to be able to get those quickly.
Are there other questions or comments from members of the board? I think that this is going to be a great tool for all sorts of different parties, whether they're administration, whether they're teachers, whether they're parents, whether they're other staff, whether the, the community at large. You know, I know that coming in the last couple of years, it's been hard to get a lot of the information and, and in some ways, this is like a baseline to build on and to move forward with and get feedback, you know, like Katrina's doing, from members of the public. And so I think it's, it's a great job and it's going to help us when it comes to getting granular when we're doing the budget in the, in the coming few months. So, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Mike Laflin and the team. Another question?
I'm never done. No, I, I would love to see our goals incorporated, that our recent goals, our achievement goals in terms of what we want to.
Oh, for the, the SOL pass rates?
Yes. I know there are a lot of goals incorporated. This, so the achievement, the specific targets that we're looking to meet. And I, I know this is nitpicky, but it's just like, I've been on the board enough years that it's like you lose track of what you have, the prior conversation, if the information is presented differently the next year and then differently the year after, and then you lose track of what you're, you're trying to make progress.
That's right. And that's what we hope this, this solves, right? So, so when you see those 13 to 14 key metrics that we have, we want to keep bringing those back in the same format each year to say, here's where we were 21-22, here's where we are 22-23, here's where we are 23-24, and see that we're, that we're making progress toward those goals.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to thank all of you for your feedback. We, I really wanted to give Dr. McGlaughlin some accolades because he, just remembering going through this process of developing a strategic plan, our previous plan was really just the shell of a plan. Didn't really have specific strategies. It didn't have objectives. It didn't have anything tied to it in terms of metrics. And that's why every year you kind of just saw, you know, lots of different things and we were just, I think, muddling through for consensus. So his, his vision has been to tie the strategic plan to accountability. And the other piece that, that you've noticed, I know, is that in our budget document, the one that we have for this year, it all ties back to the strategic plan. And that will be the same moving forward. So for the next four years, these, these metrics, the baselines that you saw tonight, those were the ones that we'll be reporting on. It will be a moving target, in other words. I want to also advertise that at Virginia School Board Association next week, Graham Page and Patrick and I will be presenting on our strategic plan. It'll be the third time we present on it. We did it up in Washington DC. We did it for a national audience with Patel for Kids a couple of weeks ago. And I think this will be the, this will be the curtain call, I hope, for our, for, for this presentation. But the other thing is we are working on a one-page, a one-pager. We call it like a one-pager document that we can have out, like when we go out and hit the road on, to meet with different groups. I am starting up a new listening tour. That'll just kind of be a forever listening tour. Each month I'm going to meet at a different school and it'll be with either students, it'll be with parents, or it will be with staff members. And the times of the day that I'll do it will, will fluctuate so that those different groups can, can meet with me. And I'm going to invite board members that are in, in that magisterial district just to, to hear what people say. And the last thing I wanted to say was, I do know that this is also kind of the evaluation season for the board per year policy. So this tool, this, the Strategic Plan Report, State of the Division, is an opportunity for you to use that as you go through and do your own evaluation. And I'm, I'm glad that you brought up the metrics piece, you know, the targets, those interim targets that the board set. I'm planning on the last Saturday in June hosting, I'm going to be calling it, you know, a retreat, a staff retreat, a cabinet retreat, and I'm going to invite, invite board members to that retreat. If we, if we have all the board, we'll, we'll, or if we have a quorum, we'll call a board meeting. If we have a handful of board members, we'll still proceed. And what we plan on doing is taking, you know, taking out this strategic plan information again, but also looking at our projected results for the SOL test for the current year and setting, revisiting our targets and maybe setting new targets. So, for example, So, for example, we talk about having our, the diversity of our staff match the diversity of our students. We don't really have targets for that. We just say, like you heard Patrick say, we want those bars to line up in, in four years, I guess, or however long it takes. But the board could say, hey, we want to see it move by a percentage and designate an interim target for that year so that we go through. But my hope is that after we have that meeting the last Saturday, we'll have a set of draft interim targets. Not a ton of them, but, you know, a few for each objective, and then we can bring that back to the board for the July meeting to kick around and, you know, determine where we want to go next with it. So I did want to add those things just by way of closing the loop on, on the process. So, but thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGlaughlin and Dr. Cass. We will now take a 10-minute break.
I call our meeting back to order. We will now move to our next agenda item, our five-year financial forecast, led by Ms. Schmidt.
Great. Good evening. I'm Rosalind Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. This next agenda item is a continuation of your last month's work session and is focused on long-range planning and budget development. So as a reminder, this work is in support of Goal Three of the Strategic Plan, Equitable Transforming Resources, with the objectives of developing modern and environmentally sustainable facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, and providing resources in an equitable manner that transforms learning experiences and opportunities for all students. The purpose of this agenda item is to review the five-year financial forecast and provide feedback for the FY24 budget development. We will start by concluding our discussion of the CIP and request that you take action in preparation for the joint board meeting with the Board of Supervisors next month. We will then transition to a discussion on our operating budget and the five-year outlook. Lastly, if time allows, we would like to get your feedback on the FY24 budget development. If we do not have time for that last item, we will discuss that at the next business meeting. With that introduction, I will now hand it over to Maya Kumizawa, our Director of Budget and Planning.
Good evening. The first section that we'll cover today is a follow-up to the work session we had two weeks ago, discussing the five-year CIP request. This evening, we're recommending that you take action on this request in preparation for the joint work session, as discussed. So this slide is a summary of the full CIP request, including projects recommended by the Long-Range Planning Advisory Committee and ongoing programs that include maintenance and replacement programs. The projects are listed in priority order, and per your discussion last time at the work session, we have included the new project, Lamb's Lane Campus Improvements, as Priority Number Four, when previously it was unranked. At the bottom of the slide, we show the Capital Needs Assessment projects, or those projects recommended for years six through 10. And please note that High School Center Two and Mountain View Expansion funding is included in the FY23 budget for the current year, so it's not shown as part of the future request. Since the CIP request doesn't contain projects addressing high school capacity, I wanted to remind you that we do have $32.5 million in FY23 for the construction of a high school center, and that amount can be carried forward. In addition, there is a project in the Capital Needs Assessment to address further high school capacity concerns for years six through 10. And this slide shows you the need for that. These are the high school enrollment projections and related capacity conflicts for the next 10 years. Enrollment at our high schools continues to grow steadily, and the bottom row on this slide illustrates the overall capacity conflict, when including our three comprehensive high schools and one high school center. You can see that Center Two may address the capacity conflict in the first five years, but another project will be required for the second five years. These capacity figures do not reflect the current trailers at each site, which are providing temporary capacity at this time. As discussed at our last work session, if we were to assume no revenue changes in the CIP, and if we had to build a CIP with no new funding, then we would have approximately $148 million over the next five years. So on this slide are the highest priority projects that we could move forward with, given a baseline level of funding. This includes full funding for Elementary School Number One and partial funding for Elementary School Number Two, and also partial funding for all of our ongoing programs. While some funding was provided for high school renovations in the currently adopted CIP, this project would not be included in this scenario due to increased cost estimates at our two elementary schools. A formal approval of our CIP has been requested by the Board of Supervisors in anticipation for our work in December. Are there any questions to either of the plans presented? And when ready, is there a motion to approve these requests?
Just to clarify, the one that we're being asked to approve tonight is the one that does not have the renovations. Is that correct?
You're being asked to approve two scenarios, one being the full request that does include the renovations, and then the second scenario would be sort of that baseline funding request.
Perfect. Thank you.
For the balanced CIP, I guess I still have the question, and I'm sorry if I'm forgetting the answer, of how do we account for the projected increase in expenses for the high school funds that we've already been allocated for High School Center Two? Remember, we talked about the presentation on how costs are like 25% more than we're expecting, and we already have that money allocated, but we reasonably can anticipate it's going to cost more than what we were given, and we were talking about potentially folding that in, or no? That doesn't seem to be the case. It's not on this, so...
So right now, we have a base amount allocated that we can move forward. If that number needs to go up, we would bring that forward as part of next fall's CIP process, and that should give us, the timing should work out that we would stay on schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And you're asking for a motion to approve those two items, right?
Yes.
Is there, do we have a motion?
I guess I'm still not clear. I thought we were going to do two different motions, one for the CIP request summary?
Yeah, right, we do. We need to.
Okay, so I move that we approve the CIP request summary as presented.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the CIP request summary as presented to us. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion. Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries, so we do approve the CIP request summary. We need a second motion on materials to be presented. Could you show us that slide again? Do we have a motion in regards to the scenario shown here?
I'm fine to make a motion on the balanced one. That's right, what you're asking for, right? A motion on the balanced CIP projection, yeah. I'm fine to make that motion. I move that we approve the CIP balanced project scenario for the Board of Supervisors.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Osborne, that we approve the CIP balanced priority projects, balanced projects. Any discussion on the motion?
I remain troubled that we are once again eliminating any renovation funding for our schools. The average age of our core schools is about a half a century, and this is an area that we consistently zero out.
And I share that feeling, because basically by giving back what was approved last year for high school renovations, we're bidding against ourselves in this. And rather than in the other one where we're asking for full amounts and then we'll work it through and figure out what are the real top priorities and what can be afforded by the county and by the schools, I have a lot of reservations about bidding against ourselves.
Just to add, I mean, under the code, we submit what we need. Our funding request is what do we need to keep going as a school division? The usual process has been, then, the county will say, "Well, we hear you, but this is all the money you get," and then we cut budget. We're being asked to do both steps at once, and I'm very uncomfortable with this change in policy.
I too am really uncomfortable with the high school renovations being left out. We've had that request on the table probably for at least the last five, six years, and for it to not be included again is really, really troubling.
Even worse, it was approved last year, and we're giving it back. And that just doesn't make sense to me.
Other discussion?
So then, do you think we would just present the needs-based?
Which is what the Virginia Code asks of us. We submit a funding request based on our needs, as we best can determine, and then we negotiate at some point, but they are asking us to do both sides of the equation.
Do we know why they're asking us for two?
Pardon?
Do we know why they're asking us for two scenarios? To cut time, or...
Ms. Schmidt, do you know or have an answer to any of that?
It's my understanding they want to know what your highest priorities are, would be my education.
We've told them with passage of the first set of budget numbers.
Yeah, all of it. The answer is all of it.
In the past, there's been the CIP Oversight Committee and then the CIP Advisory Committee. And this year, without real warning, because I've talked to the other two members today who are the public, the public and the one other official, they were not aware of the fact that the CIPAC was eliminated for this year, and under advice of council, that is a joint board, not, it doesn't report to the supervisors, it doesn't report to us. It's a joint board, and that's where a lot of the negotiations took place over the years.
So then I guess I would have a process question as well. So they want us to submit this prioritized, balanced one, and is that because they're no longer going to have, I mean, Kate references the negotiations happening before. Is the fear that if we don't submit a balanced one, then they're going to make the decision on which ones are priorities, or like... Well, I mean, are they, they're going to pick how much money to allocate towards things? Are they going to pick, I just, I guess I'm curious, why, what's the process going to look like? Is, because if you're saying those meetings aren't going to happen anymore, then this is the meeting right now, where we kind of decide what...
Well, I mean, they would say, we have a bottom line on the priorities that we've already passed, and they will say, "Well, that here's this much money," and then it would come back to us, as it has always before, and we would make the adjustments if we had to. They would not, they're not authorized to be in a position to make the specific cuts. We are. Their role is to give us the budget, and they're asking us to, you know, laterally, without full budget numbers, to make cuts. And I'm not willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we're doing it different this year as opposed to previous years, unless it's just they asked us to, and is there more logic behind that or not?
Do either of our representatives from the CIP committee have any input into that or any answer for that?
The only input, no, we have not had input into that, and the first notice that any of us on the board received that the joint committee process was being changed was the letter that was sent to the full board in September.
Okay.
And which, such notice was, as Mr. Alcarro said, such notice was not provided to our community member or to the planning commission member. They found out about it today, through Jono. So I think there is a process issue, and maybe this is a better process, but it seems to me, given that it was a joint advisory committee, the decision should have been made jointly.
So I guess my question would be, if we don't move forward with offering them what they requested, is there, is it possible, or likely, I guess as well, would be a question, that they look at this and say, because I know they've been upset before that we're, you know, asking for everything and not being reasonable with what we can actually get, could they look and say, "Okay, fine, you know, Elementary School One and Two, that's what we'll put in there. You guys can't narrow it down for us, so we'll just cap it right there."
You know, I don't think that's going to happen.
I mean, I'm just asking because I don't want to, I don't...
I don't think these are unreasonable folks we're going to be dealing with, and I think something is going to get worked out. I mean, I have 100% confidence in that. But, you know, as I've been saying, for us to eliminate it on our own is giving it back when we haven't been asked to give it back, or when we don't know what the budget numbers are that are available, you know, for us. And as we go back and forth, you know, because this is the first time I've ever seen the CIP numbers go down, you know, and we're being asked to cut our own budget, cut the numbers that have already been approved last year. And so I think the CIP request summary says exactly in order what the most, what the highest priority are: Elementary School One, Elementary School Two, High School Renovations, Lamb's Lane, Middle School Renovations, Elementary School Relevations, and so forth, in order.
So then my follow-up question would be, what about the line items, the basic ones, project management, the bus, transportation, the network technology? So those ones, if we were to just present them with the request summary, how do they, how do they know that those ones are also basically need to be givens? Does that make sense? Like, having the one, two, three, that makes it seem like those are 10, 11, 12, and 13 on this list.
We can present, they used to always be up top. We can do that again, but what happens there is then you lose focus on what your number-one project is. We can work on the graphic of that. We intentionally don't rank those, because they are typically a given, as far as a prioritization, but we can do that.
I mean, we do have a three-hour budget discussion meeting with the supervisors on December 7th, so these questions can be, we can discuss this, and it seems to me that's a better for...
Because I was wondering too, what, although we haven't taken a vote, what the repercussions will be for that meeting on December the 7th. So if we, well, I guess we'll have to see then what that will be after we take the vote, right? Because I can see our problems, and I don't think that the vote is going to eliminate any of those, and it won't eliminate really what we are discussing. So that would have to be an item that we discuss on December the 7th with them.
I think additionally, we should, as a board, identify what our priorities are, not in terms of the specific projects, but what we want to accomplish in the meeting with the supervisors.
Okay. All right, well, are we ready for the question then? Are we ready to vote? Any other discussion on the motion?
I guess I'll make my comment, which is that I yield to the expertise of the two people who have sat on the CIP committee for a long time, and it sounds like this process is not favorable to us and is not necessary, and we can discuss it more with them on the 7th. However, I guess I would point out that I have heard, as a reoccurring issue, frustration with the process and how it occurred in the past, which is that we present a really big number, no one's, and it's never, and it's never, they seem to be expressing it's never pared down or prioritized in a way, so I guess I see where they're coming from in terms of their, like, can you give us something that you know is going to be more aligned with the amount that you're going to get and is prioritized? And I know, like, Obergefell in particular has always been very vocal about how we should just not, not play into that and just tell them what we need, the needs base. So I mean, I yield to your expertise, but I don't think it's too unreasonable to ask for, like, two versions of it, but I get what you're saying, and we can discuss it hopefully on the 7th with them.
I think we'll end up with a version that will be focused on how much money they have available.
That's what we always do. It always comes back to it.
Right, but there's usually a process of back and forth, and this is just back.
I also think for me, understanding that project management on down are basically givens, we have given them that in our request summary with one and two. I mean, it's, it's in numbers. I mean, like, I think we have given them, in that CIP request summary, the same thing. I mean, we just lopped it off, so, you know, as what, with what Katrina said, I will defer to the expertise of the people who have served on that committee.
Okay, I think we're ready for the vote, so Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Lee?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
No.
Ms. Osborne?
No.
Mr. Alcarro?
No.
Dr. Acuff?
No.
Mr. Page?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, so before we move forward then, I guess we, as a board, then can draft a letter to them to let them know that this will be presented on December the 7th, so that they will not be caught unawares of this. So we'll, I'll let, I'll request that our two CIP members draft a letter to be reviewed by the board, and then we'll send that to the supervisors.
Yes, it needs to be, come from the board, not just from the two of us.
Right, yeah, right. I'm just saying, yeah, okay. So then they'll be prepared for this, and it won't be something that they are not expecting.
Mr. Page, I would add that we did have our CIP meeting today, the committee, and we did talk about doing that, putting together just sort of a point-by-point, because there are several requests within the letter that came from the Board of Supervisors. So we still have, it's still about a month away, so we figured we could go ahead and respond, and I think it is, for whatever it's worth, my opinion is, it is a good idea to let them know that, how you are responding to the request to limit the CIP request to the number that they had provided. The only thing I would do, if you would indulge me, is just a little perspective on the process. When I first came to the central office in 2009, the process was very, very different. It was very different. What would happen was, the school system would make a list of all the, like, a wish list, just like, sort of like you do now. It went out many more years, too, and it would have all the CIP items that the board wanted to try to fund, and it went into sort of a black box, and that black box was called the Technical Review Team. Do any of you remember that? So it was, it was all staff. It was highly staff-centered. There were staff from the county, there were staff from the school system, and they would go through, and they had a rubric for ranking every, every single thing that went in, and you always knew that if a fire truck went in there, it was going to get funded. If something related to schools went in, you know, schools compete very favor, would compete very favorably in that. The issue that I always had was that there never was any known amount of money that was going to get spent. So you put in, your wish list went in the hopper, and then it came back out, here's what you get, here's what you don't get, and there was no allocated funding for the schools to toggle around and decide what we were going to prioritize going into it. It was kind of a hidden process. And there was even times, there was one year where, like, the final piece to that was the county executive could just go in and change the order after it was all done. And that actually happened one time. The board had put together the request, it went through the Technical Review Team, it was a good prioritized list for both the county and the school system, and not the current county executive, but the previous one, went in and just changed some things around, and that became the CIP for the next five years. And then, so you saw that evolve, right? Trying to not just have staff doing it, you know, get the two boards more involved, have more interaction with the boards. So I realize, and I support, I certainly support your decision around coming and saying, "Well, we're not going to cut it. We're going to go with the whole list. It is a prioritized list, so we'll start from there." But I do want to say that, I feel like the, as an organization working together, the staff, what we're trying to do is to make it more and more transparent around the amount of funding that is initially available or projected to be available, and then as the process goes through, they get revenue updates, you know, starting now, moving forward, moving forward. So that's just an observation. I'm not really trying to make any point. I just wanted to share some perspective around where I've seen it over the years. Thank you.
If I may, I would just like to say that the projects that are on our list are not, have all been heavily scrutinized. They're not, I know you didn't mean it in the way a wish list. We haven't built a new school in 20 years. We have 80 trailers full of students in classrooms, and we have been very frugal already in the list that we have, and some of the renovation monies were already in the five-year CIP that the POS supervisors approved last year. So to see them zeroed out after they've already been approved is disheartening.
All right, Ms. Schmidt, we hope we haven't complicated the rest of your presentation.
I would just ask one piece of direction as we prepare our presentation. The reason it's zeroed out is that the cost of the elementary schools have gone up. So we would like, even if it's not approved, to show this in some form for at least illustrative purposes, that the adopted baseline CIP doesn't even afford the projects that were originally adopted, and we can figure out how to show that. But I think it's, it's not a balance, but I think it's important to show what, how much that can afford or not afford. it's important to show what, how much that can afford or not afford. So we won't show it in an adopted way, but I think it's important to see that we can't even do the plan that's currently adopted.
So you would have that for December 7th?
So the presentation will be highly on the needs base and the justification of the projects you're asking for, but I think you do need to leave this slide on how it fits in the current revenues, in the limitations of the current revenues.
Okay.
So just, so what I was hearing you say was that you would, you want to show that there's a gap already in terms of inflation between what you're projecting would be spent on?
So that $148 million that was adopted last year, it just doesn't go as far?
Right, okay. So it's the, it's what's current, and it's a gap caused by inflation? Okay.
Ms. Schmidt, about how much are you estimating the costs have increased for the schools? Is that in the 5% range?
We have, depending on the type of project, whether it's construction or technology or school bus, for FY, we're updating our costs based on what things cost today in FY '23, so that's significantly higher than 5% on average. And then moving forward, it'll be in the 5% range, and then we are working with county staff to develop common assumptions for the sort of out-years that are harder to predict.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next, we'll shift gears to a different but related five-year forecast, which is our operating plan. The purpose of a five-year financial forecast is to ensure that capital and operational decisions will ensure long-term financial stability, and it also serves as a planning tool to supplement our existing budget process. As you know, the annual budgeting process is the point at which we comprehensively review a plan for the next school year and make decisions necessary for balancing to our available revenues. What the five-year forecast does is to ensure that budget decisions made will not necessarily leave us in a place that is not financially sustainable in the long term. We will first look at the revenue forecast. About 68% of our revenues comes from the transfer from Albemarle County from general fund revenues. About 27% of our revenues come from the state, so we'll focus on those two drivers. This is the forecast provided by Albemarle County in terms of their general fund revenues over the next five years. General fund revenues are primarily split between the CIP, ACPS, and local government. Growth for FY '24 is currently projected to be healthy, with a slowdown projected in FY '25 and '26 in anticipation of a potential recession. In FY '27 and '28, revenues are expected to grow at about 4%, which is a historical average. And I bring this slide in front of you again, since projected enrollment plays a significant role in our projection of state revenues. As student enrollment grows, state revenues will grow with it, assuming that other factors stay constant. We anticipated to grow about 4% over the next five years in enrollment. In summary, here's the five-year revenue forecast. We're expecting a 5.4% increase in the local transfer, a 1.6% increase in state revenues in FY '24. As I mentioned before, the rate of growth decreases in FY '25 and '26, and then levels out after that. For state revenues, we're assuming a constant local composite index, no major changes in funding formulas, growing enrollment, and increasing position costs for funded SOQ positions. Overall, we're looking at about $10 million in new revenues for next year, a little bit lower in the two years following, and then coming back up to about the $10 million range in years four and five. Switching over to the expenditure side, in a typical year, we see that these six factors and decisions drive our expenditure budgets. For the purpose of the five-year forecast, we will assume increases in salaries to stay competitive against our markets, increases in healthcare contributions to fully fund our healthcare fund, more changes to class size ratios, increases in operational obligations and inflation, the operational impact of proposed CIP projects, and a modest placed order for new proposals. This is one scenario for a five-year expenditure forecast. You can see the potential costs for each of the expenditure drivers that was listed on the previous slide. We anticipate significant costs, at least in FY '24, the next year, to address compensation and operational inflation, as you might expect. We do anticipate that in future years, compensation increases and inflation will reflect that of historical levels. When overlaying the revenue and expenditure forecasts, we're starting off FY '24 with a funding gap of over $5 million. That funding gap grows significantly in FY ' '25 and '26 due to slowing revenue growth, and then stabilizes in years four and five. The slide here is to illustrate what options we have for balancing the budget each year. These are not new and are the same options that we have in a typical year. Revenue projections may increase, as we talked about with CIP. The projections will be finalized over the coming months. We can limit new proposals or limit July 1st pay increases, but we are committed to the compensation adjustments that we make during the current FY '23 year. We can reduce services. This may mean increasing class sizes, reducing transfers that we have in place already, or reducing our inflationary increases, which would result in a reduction in our operational services. These are budget decisions that will need to be made during this and future budget development processes. But between these, we're confident in our ability to maintain a financially sustainable plan for the long term. Are there any questions for the revenue and expenditure forecast, and what might be missing from this plan, or what other information would you like to have?
Comments regarding Ms. Kumazawa's questions?
I think these will be, they're always hard decisions, but I appreciate the heads-up so that we can be thinking about them. So, thank you.
You know, in terms of some of these, for example, limit new proposals, until we really know what the new proposals are, it's tough, but I'd say that's an area that, you know, we may be able to, to cut away at the $5 million. You know, increasing revenues, whether it's local, you know, that's, I think, something that should be explored, and state. I mean, it's, you know, our Board of Supervisors has always been very, very generous with us, and so I look forward to seeing the first versions of the budget, and we can work on it from there.
Any other comments from board members?
So, in the slide deck, I do have some pieces that are specific to FY '24 budget development, but I'll check in with you all to see if you want to move this to the next meeting or not.
I do have one, sorry, do have one question about the compensation assumptions. In our presentation of the employment study, we made a commitment to look at other groups of employees in terms of their compensation. So that's just sort of a comment, that compensation assumptions, we did make that commitment to look at those. I guess that's not the same as saying approve them, but that was the assumption.
Okay. Does that comment help with?
No, I mean, that was just...
Was your question?
I'm sorry, Maya, what else were you going to show us?
If you would like, I could move forward with the next section, which is FY '24, or we can postpone that for next meeting.
Do we want to, we have one other agenda item after this, so do we want to go into the next part related to the budget, or delay it?
I'd be of the mindset of postponing it, just because I think it's pretty important. It's like a big check-in on what we want to see in the upcoming budget, and I'd rather it have a dedicated time, unless we want to really dive into it.
Okay, well, that's one vote to postpone.
Postpone.
Postpone?
I will defer to our vice chair.
I'm just trying to be cognizant of the time. We're 10 minutes behind, and our meetings have been running till, like, 11:00, and getting to the meaty subjects at the very end, I feel like people hold back comments, you don't want to delay it, you don't want to...
Okay.
The only issue, our next, our joint meeting with the supervisors is the 7th, and that is the day before our next school board meeting.
Yeah, next meeting is December 8.
Yeah, so I would, I would like to cover budget issues that we're going to perhaps discuss.
The December 7th work session with the Board of Supervisors is focused on the long-range planning. We would have the capital and the operating covered, but the next piece is more the annual budget process, which we shouldn't be going into.
And do we have a special board meeting on the 1st?
That's for interviews for the...
We could add something to, if we wanted, right? No, we're just going to do interviews.
Just applications.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so is your vote to postpone?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
All right, so it's unanimous that we postpone that portion?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa.
Ms. Kumazawa, and Ms. Schmidt. And we hope that the vote didn't adversely affect you in any type of way, but thank you so much for your presentation. All right, our next agenda item, the legislative agenda, Ms. Dunn, and the thing Ms. Dunn is going to appear via Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Can you...
Oh, Helen.
I see myself in the background up there. I am sorry to be remote tonight and not with you in person. I am a bit under the weather, and so I'm grateful to be able to do it this way, which is kind of on our legislative agenda as well. So I'll just take a moment, and good evening to all of you, by the way. I hope you're all doing well. I'm just going to take a moment to talk a little bit about our proposed 2023 legislative agenda, discuss with you some of the things that seem to be highest priority in our school division when it comes to state legislation. So I will share my screen with you. Jennifer, will you advance slides? It's telling me I can't share my screen. Thank you.
I'm not trying to share my screen. Helen, you can share your screen now.
All right, there we go. All right. All right. So, as you all know, the reason we do this every year is just to talk, to give our community and our state legislators an idea of what some of our legislative priorities are on key policy issues that are generally on a state level. So tonight, I just want to give you this information, see what your feedback is on it, and then we'll go from there. So we will be scheduling meetings with legislators soon. I believe we'll be working on a December meeting with as many legislators as we can get in the room, as well as you all, and possibilities for having January meetings with legislators as well to do some advocacy work. So any board members who would like to do that, please contact me. I know, Mr. Alcar, you've already mentioned to me that you'd like to have some of those meetings, so I'm happy to set those up for some in-person advocacy this January. So General Assembly session starts on January 11th this year. It's a short session, only 30 days, in theory. The House Education Chair, it has not changed, it's Glenn Davis, and the Senate Education Chair, still Louise Lucas. We do have the benefit of having two chairs who are also, serve our district. So the House of Courts and Justice, House Courts of Justice Chair is Rob Bell, and the Senate Judiciary Committee Co-Chair is Creedee. So it's wonderful to have access to people who do that kind of work, who are also, who also represent our district. And I'm just going to show, or speak with you tonight about some of our, sort of the highlights of the legislative agenda items, so that, these are the things that we don't generally propose that are a bit novel this year, and hopefully that'll be a little bit more interesting to you and inspire a little bit more feedback. So in terms of hiring practices, one issue that has apparently been having an effect on people all over the state is our fingerprinting policies. The state of Virginia, for any employee to be able to come in and begin working for the school division, they have to go through the Virginia's Central Criminal Database for their fingerprints. They are not able to use any other authorized fingerprinting databases in the country. And so what I'm proposing here is just that we would allow people to use fingerprinting databases from other states or countrywide national databases as well, like the FBI. These are all obviously very valid methods of getting that information, criminal history information. And so you can imagine, we have moments during the summer, for example, when we're trying to get teachers or new employees into the school division, get them ready to go. People travel during the summer who work in education especially. So this would be an opportunity for us not to have to bring people back to the state of Virginia to be able to get into the system and get started. We also, I've also proposed on here that we would ask for a little bit more flexibility when it comes to background checks. You may already understand that when background checks are clean, that shows up immediately in an online database, but when they're not, it takes more time because there actually has to be a mailed background check piece of information that comes from USPS. So that, we have no timeframes for this. This has had an adverse impact in the school division, because people who don't have any actual criminal history, but for example, come from different countries, but still have worker status in the US, have been hung up in this, because if you're born in a different country, this actually looks like, it looks on the, through the system, like you may, you're pending, so you may actually have something on your record when indeed you don't. You can imagine, this isn't a great way to start the employer-employee relationship off. So we're asking for a new way to get that information through when there needs to be more time on that background check. You all already know about Local Taxing Authority and that initiative. It came up last year in General Assembly, well, this year in General Assembly, in 2022. But we are declaring our support of Local Taxing Authority, which would allow us, just give us the authority. It would not actually mean that we would do it, but it would give us the authority to levy an additional 1% sales tax, and that would just add funding for division capital projects. So kind of ties in with what Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Kumazawa just spoke about earlier. Meetings of public bodies, this is something we did discuss last year, but it seems to have gained more traction this year. So we're basically asking to allow for quarums without the same amount of advanced notice that's currently required, or for people to, sorry, for people to join remotely and create a quorum without the necessary advanced notice that has been required so far throughout this sort of new COVID, remote meeting situation. So we're just asking a little bit of flexibility there. So we're just asking a little bit of flexibility there. Onboarding bus drivers, I know I've spoken with a few of you about this already. Back in 2020, Creed Deeds actually sponsored, and Rob Bell and I worked on together, and as well as Senator Deeds, a bill that allowed for bus drivers to be added to the critical shortage designation in the state of Virginia. And you already probably know that the critical shortage designation just means that you can retire from whatever education or whatever role you've had within the VRS, but come back and, and work within one of those critical shortage designated areas, but take your retirement and still get paid. So you don't actually add into the retirement system anymore, but you can still get paid from it, as well as taking whatever salary you may have for the work that you would be doing. So what, the only issue with this, which theoretically would be a wonderful help for getting more bus drivers into the school division, as we know that's a serious issue all over the country, there is a 365-day required break in service through the VRS. So you can't actually come back a week later or 30 days later and come back into work. You have to wait that, that full year. And the problem with that, as you can imagine, is that people who actually need the income are dissuaded they can't wait that full year. So we're asking, within some reasonable guardrails, to have a shorter, a shorter required break in service that would facilitate a little bit more, because we do so often have folks who say, so retiring bus drivers or other administrators, teachers who say they would like to come back and drive a bus and stay involved and engaged with the school division, but can't for this reason. Swatting, we've actually asked for a little bit more, a little bit more consequence for students or people in general who make hoax communications to 911, so to emergency services. We all know that this has been an increased issue in the state of Virginia and all over the country. So we're just asking to be able to make more, to provide more consequences when these issues pop up. And we haven't been very specific about this on our legislative agenda, because I'm not, I'm not convinced that we really want to truly punish students to the extent that they end up in jail or have a permanent felony on their records. But I do provide that we would like just to have more flexibility for consequences when this takes place. And I've also created an item on the agenda that's based from this statement that you all released regarding the transgender and gender expansive model policies several weeks ago. So I've, I've basically shortened that, condensed it, and put it in here and said that we always want to be, we always want to provide a safe environment, that we expect that, and that it's the Commonwealth constitutional responsibility to provide this for all students in a safe and engaging way. So these are really what I have at this point for you all, and I'm happy to hear any feedback or take any questions that you may have, or about any of the other legislative agenda items that you may have seen on what's on the, on the electronic school board agenda.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Dunn. Do we have questions on the items or the date? You're going to work on a date for us to meet with the legislators, right?
Yes, that's right. So right now, it looks like we're looking into mid-December for that, with opportunities for other advocacy outside of that. So I think we will try to have one large meeting with all of our legislators as well, as many as possible, as well as as many as possible of you all. But from there, you know, certainly January, there'll be opportunities to have one-on-ones with our legislators or any other time really that you request.
Helen, is there any specific language proposed or a specific proposal on the VRS and critical shortage designation? Or is any particular legislator interested in putting that bill in?
So Senator Deeds has actually said that he would take this item up on our behalf. He and I have been talking a good deal about that. There is some red tape at the federal level, which of course, we don't have power over in this way, and that pertains to the IRS. So we're actually working right now on figuring out how we could kind of balance that IRS red tape and, and this critical shortage change out so that we might actually be able to effectuate something that benefits the school division. We don't have all of that nailed down right now. Senator Deeds is actually working really hard on it, and I think he, he's trying to figure out through COB what is possible. So not yet, I guess is the short answer, but we're, we're getting there.
Dr. Dunn, Dr. Dunn, thank you. These, these are well thought out, and, and I'm sure that, you know, we're going to have some comments.
Thank you.
You know, moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure, yeah.
I have a few quick comments. I would agree on the VRS for critical shortage areas. We just on our bus ride along today, we're hearing about how they have a driver who, they're limited to working four and a half hours a day in order to not get rid of their retirement, and, but they were willing to work more if they could, and we have such a shortage, it just seems silly. So hopefully that can be worked out, although I know it's been a priority for many years, so it's kind of disheartening to hear that it might not even be feasible to some extent if there's federal red tape. My other question was for the meetings of the public body, what limitations are we looking to remove specifically? Are we like targeting a number, like 50% versus 25%? Or are we trying to get rid of the individual requirements you need to participate virtually? Like you don't have to provide specific reasons why you, I'm just curious, because this is fairly vague. And then the follow-up is, are we working with the Board of Supervisors? Because I just went to a meeting, I think, where they're also advocating for something similar. They were trying to get all, the ability to do virtual Board of Supervisors meeting, and I think they got pushback.
Yeah. So as of right now, I think the idea for the public bodies question, and I couldn't hear everything you said prior to that with regard to the VRS. So if, I'm not sure if you had a question at the end of that, and if you did.
I like it.
Oh, good. Very good. So in terms of the, of the public, meetings of public bodies, what I think is really the ideal here would be that we could establish quorum A, without having to have the prior notification when somebody has to join remotely. I think at the, at this time, we have, there is a three-day requirement, I believe, for that. And beyond that, for people to be able to join remotely when necessary, without actually having to, to do any prior notification, I think is really the goal. Several of my counterparts across the state have struggled with this with their school boards and certainly with advisory committees. I don't think anyone wants, for example, school boards to meet remotely primarily, but I think for circumstances like me right now, where you simply can't be in person, but you still want to be able to engage in a meeting, the idea would be for that to remain possible without having to do all of the same notifications or lose some of the quorum rights.
I guess on that one, Helen, I, yeah, it does. And I know it's just nitty-gritty. I've just, I guess I'd be curious what specific changes we were looking for to that code section.
Are there any other comments or questions for Ms. Dunn? If not, Helen, thank you so very much for your presentation tonight, and we do hope that you're feeling better. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks so much to all of you. Take care.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. Is there any other business from board members or from the superintendent? Hearing none, our meeting is adjourned.